Okay, we're good. Welcome, everyone. It is April 17th and it's our session. We'll go around and get city council reports first. Congresswoman Miller?
Can you skip me for a second?
Sure. Mayor Protem?
I had inclusivity board this last week. They did not have any presentation. They talked about their goals moving forward. They're still working on them. And then they had a fair amount of questions about the comprehensive land use plan and our stance on the land use bill. And that was pretty much it.
Councilor Baker?
I did some more research on other things, but it appears that the assault weapons bill has come back live and I'd like us to discuss that later and give direction to our really lobbyists.
Unfortunately, I was out sick last week. I missed the fire awards banquet, but just wanted to give a shout out to them and all who have served our community. That's one of my favorite events to go to and I was sad to have missed it. So shout out to those who were there and who received awards.
You needed Kleenex again, you do every year, but this one was to Kleenex. Councilor Seymour?
I got the opportunity along with Mayor Protem and the mayor to meet with Congresswoman Pedersen here. And so that was a productive visit, I thought, and I'll let the mayor fill in on any other particulars. I also had the opportunity to attend the fire department awards banquet. It overlapped with Parks Rec, Library and Open Space, so my apologies for that, two places at one time. One of the, one of the awardees, award, awardees?
Recipients?
Recipients, awardees, yes, was one of our favorite local business owners, Gabe Wheeler of Gee's Tacos. And didn't even know this, his office, his business two doors down from mine and he got the lifesaving, oh, citizens lifesaving award. He had a customer have a medical issue and fall and hit their head and was unresponsive and he began compressions immediately and fire personnel arrived and kept things going and the gentleman is alive today. So, good, good thing for a very, very good person and excellent local business owner. That was it for last week.
Councilor Sadi? So I mentioned this last week, but I wanted to reiterate the human services board grant application launched today. An email was sent out to all the previous grantees and I sent out a notice to my newsletter folks to if they knew anyone, any nonprofits, and so it's getting promoted out there. We're hoping to get more and new applicants this year. The deadline is June 1st and the human services board will be having a kickoff meeting on June 9th to review. Interview period will be from June 12th to Ju-, to July 14th and we'll decide sometime in August and bring to city council August 15th. So, that's the timeline.
Thank you for giving me time to find my email. So I'm just following up on an email I sent to everyone in a sort of question about what other cities are doing with respect to infrastructure financing. And so, in the particular meeting I was sitting in, several cities said that they had developed a, a system improvement fee which was specifically geared to help them pay for new facilities. And it was for new development. And so it wasn't just your water dedication or your tap fee, but it was this additional fee. And so I was kind of curious to know whether we'd looked at that ourselves as another financing tool or, you know, what would it generate? I don't know. But with, it could be applied to both commercial and residential or just any new development. And could it have a targeted effect potentially on either helping us, you know, reduce our rate increases or specifically bolster a program that might help our fixed income or low income households? So, I'm just, again, there's, we, and that latter issue of just helping our low income slash fixed income households, you know, we've heard a lot of folks kind of come it from, for various reasons to city council to talk to us about some of the concerns they have with inflation and overall living costs. And it's a number of things, right? It's Excel, I mean, who got their energy bill this past couple of months and had their jaw drop? And it's property taxes, it's, you know, it's water, it's their housing costs. And so, just finding, you know, finding ways where we can help those residents stay in their homes. And so is that latter part of a conversation of our housing preservation slash, you know, what our economic development team is doing to keep people in their houses? So, that might be a separate conversation to have with that, with our affordable housing slash housing preservation team. But I'm just kind of curious to know more on the system improvement fee or something like that, if we've thought about it or?
Yeah, not something that I'm tracking. I don't know whether Larry is.
Thank you, Mr. Freitag. No, I just want to make sure I had it written down, system improvement fee. It's not something that I've been familiar with and could, you said that you'd learned of this through some context. Is this, was this through an association or something we could follow up on? Because I would, I would be interested in doing that.
Yeah, I think Aurora may have one. I, oh, so it was a bunch of folks that are just meeting to discuss the land use bill, 213. And several folks were, had joined that were from public works side, the public work side of things. I want to say it was Aurora, but I could, I can, I can find out who it was. I see Sarah over there, Sarah Borger. I don't know if you had any thoughts about it or familiarity with what some of the other cities are doing?
Yes, so we did get your email earlier and so you don't, I personally don't know a lot about what other cities are doing. What I will say is that our tap fees are based on cost of service. So there's a component that's related to infrastructure and there's a component related to actual water supply. And actually, we were having a conversation about this earlier. Some portions of that are actually written into the charter, I believe. And so Dave may have something to add there. But an important component of that is that since we're largely built out, we're going to be different than, say, Aurora is they have a lot of development left before they're fully built out. We don't really have that much, so while it might provide a little bit of extra income if we were to do something like that, it's not going to be massive in offsetting any other costs. And then I also know that you had asked about programs for-
Like a roundup program, yeah.
Yeah. And so we can send you, probably best just to send you an email summarizing. We do already have a, a list of programs that we've got. And so that might just be easiest sent to you via email and outline what those programs are.
Do we have a roundup program?
We don't have a roundup program, but we have assistance programs. We've got a couple of assistance programs.
That's fine if you've already, I just wanted us to look at it and see if it's useful at all. Yeah. Awesome. Thank you. And then otherwise, I just have Dr. Cog this week.
I'm glad to see Yang Mi here tonight because kudos to her and the folks that put action, actions against hate with acts of kindness together, have a round table and where did Yang Mi go? Oh, you're hiding, sorry. But they invited me last week to come and be with them Saturday, right?
Yeah.
And it was a crazy weekend. But the students, there were 10 students and they used regular bikes, but they made them into e-bikes. And their whole piece was, how can they take the acts that have been happening against Asians and turn that with kindness and give back to those that need it in some form? So, they chose the e-bikes. They had wonderful support, the people that helped them learn to take the kit to turn a bike into an e-bike. And then the question was, who do they give it to? So, they had them go through a process of having people apply and they had to interview and then they found out how hard that is to decide on just the five that were going to get the bikes. And so then, for the ceremony, the students have now learned and they shared that they've learned welding and electrical things and just how to put this bike together. But Yang Mi had them put their thoughts together and had to give a little speech so they had communication. And they presented to all of us and I recorded all of them on Facebook, so if you want to go look. And then their recipient was there and I think we had all but one that was there. And then after that, they got their certificates, we took pictures. And then, the big deal was, we went out into the parking lot and they had to show their recipient how to use the bike. And they, the recipient actually got on the bike and went. It was, it was just, we had no crashes. Everybody was safe and I don't know if they're going to do that again, but what, just everything that the students shared, what it meant to them. And I did, I did write Mark and said, this is where I'm going to be Saturday. Is there any way we can help highlight it just because there was not going to be any reporters there or anything? And Jess came and tried to make it as simple on her. We got pictures as early as we could so that she didn't have to stay there the whole time. But she did a great job and I hope she got my thanks. And it was just a beautiful day and I, as I told those students, anytime they feel somebody's saying ugly things to them, I hope they just close their eyes and remember the moment that we were in Saturday because it was a beautiful time and they need to know they changed some lives. So, thanks for that. We had Metro Mayor's caucus on Wednesday. All but one city is against 213. Big thing, and I think I either shared or wrote, again with open space, some of the cities were making sure open space is tied down in their codes and everything that nobody can come in and tell them what they have to do, can do or should do with their open space. Some were, were restricting their open space, some had other words. So, before anything gets voted on, I hope we're sure our open space is secure. Again, we had the fire awards and then Congresswoman Pedersen was here, was that Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Wonderful. She spent two hours with us and she wanted to see something, so after we met with her here, explained water and the plant that we're building and we'll be coming, looking for grants and everything, answered her questions. She wanted to go onsite, so we took her over to downtown and we showed her all around there. She had not seen any of that. Rich shared some of the fun things that she needed to look for, for places to eat and everything, so she's going to be coming back. And then we walked underneath the new underpass to RTD. She, she genuinely was thrilled to hear everything going on. We always offer to her and Congresswoman Caverro, they could use whatever they need for their town hall meetings, if they wanted to do something together, separate, whatever, just let us know, we'll try to make those accommodations. And she already knows what she wants to see when she comes back. So, it was, I thought, a very good time. The staff that was there presented, answered her questions. We walked around downtown, shared the vision down there, what's coming, dirt's moving. And I was told the big, is it an electrical that gets graffitied all the time? Is that electrical?
Yes.
That's being moved, so I don't have to, they, I said, you're doing that, so I don't have anything to report. And they laughed, but anyway, that's moving and they had a lot of dirt moving that day. So, lots going on and it was, it was a great week, but the topper was Yang Mi and her kids with the bikes, so thanks. That brings us to city manager's report.
Good evening, mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors, ladies and gentlemen in attendance, anybody that's watching online, we'll run through some updates. So next slide, please. So we did want to remind everybody, we mentioned this last Monday, but again, this coming Saturday from 8:00 to 1:00 p.m. is the Great Global Cleanup. It's running across Westminster and certainly Highland Hills. It's a way to celebrate Earth Day and join other volunteers all over the world in large-scale trash cleanup. And as I mentioned, you know, when you head up into the mountains, you kind of live on that, you know, mantra of leave no trace. And so I kind of question why we wouldn't apply that in our own community. And so I encourage folks to get out, be a part of that and leave no trace here in our beautiful community. And the city will provide supplies, disposal of the trash bags, all ages are welcome. I'm bringing my wife and my granddaughter to participate. If you haven't already registered, you're certainly welcome to do that at ggc@cityofwestminster.us or you can call that phone number. And so cleanup goes from, call it 8:00 to 11-ish or so, and then there'll be a cookout, barbecue, I believe, at City Park. So, looking forward to that on Saturday, but hope folks can participate. Next slide. Some Westy wins. This, recently, the city council approved two housing lift agreements, deploying $1 million in HUD CDBG funding to rehabilitate and preserve about 120 units of affordable housing in our community. And so the Hidden Lake senior housing and the Westchester apartments were each approved for up to $500,000 in improvements for those capital projects. So, exciting, excited about that, good for our community. And then as the mayor mentioned, U.S. Representative Pedersen, she was visiting Westminster last week and that's a picture of us standing on the east side of U.S. 236 at the mouth of the tunnel which connects to the downtown in the background. And so we had a great visit, lots of good questions and we look forward to her coming back and seeing the completion of that here later. I think we said ribbon cutting in late June, if I remember correctly. So, excited about that, but certainly a Westy win. Next slide. Some things to know, special permits and license board meeting is this Wednesday, April 19th, 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. here at City Hall, Council Chambers. Again, as I mentioned, great global cleanup this coming Saturday. And then our next city council meeting is Monday, April 24th. We begin at 6:30 with a pre-meeting and the meeting starts properly at 7:00 o'clock here in Council Chambers. Next slide. No information items this evening, next slide. And then just wanted to remind everybody, the city staff certainly wants to be accessible. We want to be responsive, we're want to be transparent, accountable in all of our actions. We want you to reach out and ask questions and contact us, notify us if there are problems in the community so we can get after them. If you want to call my office, you can do that, that's my phone number, it's 303-658-2006. You can email me directly at mfreitag@cityofwestminster.us and you can follow us on Twitter, like us on Facebook, you can check us out on Instagram, or you can ring our bell at nextdoor. Pending any questions, that's all I have this evening.
No seen questions, so thank you. And that brings us to our first presentation, the proposed National Lao Mung Memorial at City Park, Along the Way to Time.
And so, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors, I know this has been a long process to get us to this point, but we're at the point where we want to get your blessing tonight to be able to bring this back and, and get approved. So, I'm going to pitch this over to our Parks Rec and Library Director, Tomas Haraero Mishler, and it's yours. Floor, thank you.
Good evening, good evening, mayor, Mayor Protem and councilors. I'm really delighted to be here this evening to really offer this presentation, which is intended to update city council on recent progress for a potential National Lao Mung Memorial proposed for City Park and to provide you an overview of the proposed agreement. And as it says on the screen, our purpose is really seeking your approval on our next steps for this. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to John Van, who's the Capital Projects Administrator for the city.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. It's been a long time in coming. This has been a project that I got involved with on my first day here back in 2016.
Me too.
It's, it's been very fun to be able to continue with this.
I date you because I started in 2010.
Well, actually, somebody started in 2006, according to my notes. I mean, that's how far back this goes. When the city was contacted by Colonel Bob Riesling, I believe he was then retired, about the possibility of bringing this national monument or monument to the Lao Mung community here. It was very exciting and at that point, it even took a while, because these things just don't move very fast. But we got to a point in 2010 where staff had directed, moving forward with a potential agreement, there was a site agreed to at City Park that was somewhat adjacent to the Armed Forces Chieftain Guard. We'll have a map up late, a little bit later, I can show you. And we were directed then to, at the December 20th meeting, after the agreement was approved, to have a formal signing. Unfortunately, Colonel Riesling passed away prior to that meeting in December. And not sure exactly what happened in the following timeframe afterwards, but basically the movement kind of lost its steam and was searching for direction. Fast, fast forward to 2016, we were contacted by Yang Chi, who is, is on the current committee and we'll get some introductions here, but we were, were contacted, we kept talking, we kept working, trying to come up with ideas, looking at sites, what, what we're really are, you know, trying to provide. And we finally got to a point where we agreed on some basic fundamentals, a business plan, what we, what the Lao Mung Committee really needed to be able to provide to the city so we would be comfortable in bringing something forward to council. So we've been working through that. There's been all kinds of fun things. They bought a plane. They, they have a full-size T-28 plane that actually flies and they've been bringing that to a couple of air shows and using that as a fundraising mechanism to show what's going on. The, the development of the monument itself has evolved and through different conversations over the years, the desire to create somewhat of a larger, more meaningful piece has come about. So we have a new design, which kind of required a new site to be looked at. That original site was very small, very, very close to 104th Street. And so, we, we took a while to try and locate that site and we believe this evening we'll be able to propose a very good site that is going to make the committee very happy, the Lao Mung community very happy, and the City of Westminster very happy. So, and moving forward with that, what, we've got all kinds of information and documents, any questions that we want to ask. But what I'd like to do first of all is introduce Bill Holand, who is the Vice Chair of the National Lao Mung Memorial Committee. The Chairman, John Haran, was unable to be here this evening. But Bill, I'd love to have you introduce the members of your foundation that are here.
Well, thank you very much. I think some people know Yang Chi, he's, he's the idea and the passion behind this. His lovely wife, Pasha, over there, wave.
Also on our committee is John Newman. John is a F-4 pilot, believe, who actually flew bombing missions in Laos and became very close to the Mung community, the Mung pilots. And of course, you all know Yang Mi, she is terrific, she's both on our board. We also have with us Mr. John O'Donnell, who is one of our- who is one of our contractors, who's helping us raise money. He put on a terrific airshow in St. Paul with our airplanes. Eighty thousand Mung live in the city of St. Paul in Minnesota. And he, we flew the plane out there and raised some money with it and created a national, a national, we actually got on international Mung TV with his work, and so now we're a worldwide organization. A little bit about myself. I am a disabled Vietnam veteran. I have had a storied political career as a public service. I worked for Gary Hart and also Ed Perlmutter, as well as United Airlines in the interim. And I am now County Commissioner in my last term for the county of Arapco County. And been very active there in working on a variety of programs that everybody deals with in terms of business development, water, air, and oil, oil and gas development. But let me just give you a little reasoning, why I got involved and dragged both the wonderful mayor, who's second time around here, and as well as the work with Congressman Perlmutter, who became a very strong supporter of the city and the Mung community here. Let me talk a little bit about the rationale of the secret war. In 1962, the Department of Defense, led by the CIA, determined that the war in Vietnam was beginning to bubble. And they realized that Laos was a neutral country. So any kind of military action in that area would be in violation of that concept. Well, that changed over the years, as we well know. So they came in and organized what they call a special guerrilla unit of Mung soldiers, as young as 13 and as old as 60. And they started, the U S Army, through the, well, the CIA was U S Army experience, trained the Mung in battle technique. They also brought over, purchased 150 T-28 aircraft, which was a train, developed as a training aircraft for the Navy. And the French bought it during the Indo-China War and developed it into a fighter bomber. So they began to train young Mung pilots to fly it. In the early days of the war, these young pilots who would fly 10, 10 missions a day, or John flew about three, right? If that, two.
Two.
Brave young men actually bombed the Ho Chi Minh Trail. And in the early days of the war, they actually stopped the movement of supplies from North Vietnam, Vietnam into Laos, which were killing Americans and our allies. So this coming year is, will be the 50th anniversary of the conclusion of the secret war in Laos. The Laotian people suffered, and the Mung people suffered greatly as a result of the war. Over 40,000, 40,000 of their fighters were killed. Hundreds of thousands of civilians were killed, and even today are being attacked and killed. They're kind of an independent people. And so we felt that this memorial would provide an opportunity, not only to beautify the park and honor the Laotian, the Mung people who came to this country as refugees, and as we can see from Yang Li, have turned into their second generation, have been model citizens, doctors, lawyers, dentists, entrepreneurs, and loyal, loyal to the United States. So we felt that it was important that we tell that story. There are many, several monuments around the country, but nobody really tells the story of the suffering of the Mung people, how they, how they became so, so strong supporters of democracy and the need for freedom, and they presented a unified front and sacrificed their own people to try to restore and save democracy in Southeast Asia. Why Westminster? Well, Westminster has a large, you have the largest Mung community. And you know, they show up and they vote, and they become very significant parts of this community. They bring taxes, they educate their children here, and their children go on to be lawyers and entrepreneurs, et cetera. But Westminster is in the center of the United States, essentially. We have, the East Coast has almost 150,000 Mung citizens living there, and it's doubling every two years. California has, has an equal amount. I think Minnesota has one of the largest, California's number two, and then Wisconsin is followed by that. But they're spread all over the country. And this would be an ideal place to have a significant monument that tells the story of freedom-loving people that recognize those Americans, almost 700 of them died in Laos, most of them with Air Force, trying to save, save that, save this country and rid that area of communism. And over, almost 500 pilots who were shot down over Laos and ejected were saved by the Mung, by the S G U, the special guerrilla units. They saved these young American brave pilots and got them back to the lines. So I think it, I think it's befitting that we take this opportunity to express our support. And I think finally, what really is significant in what the mayor was talking about, looking at acknowledging the Asian youth, right now, this country is in terrible turmoil. There's a tremendous, tremendous amount of racial prejudice going across. What better way to show our support of all minorities, and particularly Asians, who are literally killed now? They're being blamed for COVID, they're attacked for a variety of reasons, but it's basically racial-based. This would be a wonderful gesture for the City of Aurora and the people that support this effort to exercise their excitement and support of this great minority community who has contributed so much to this country, and it has showed their loyalty by spilling their blood for freedom.
Hopefully, it's Westminster, not Aurora.
Oh, I mean Westminster. Listen, I know Aurora pretty well. My wife actually was a city councilwoman there, I think Abby knows of her. She's from Aurora too, so that's kind of, but Westminster, it really, you guys have been so supportive over the years. It's been a struggle. Right now, we're in a more, in a great place. Congressman Perlmutter has, we have a community grant for the congressman of $250,000. And as soon as we come to this agreement, we do the environmental assessment, the money will be available, so we can really start moving forward with the final design phase. We've used a firm called Surface 360, which is a great architectural firm who has done military monuments all over the world. In fact, the World War II monument was one that they had a role in building. So they're nationally recognized. I think, I think that when you see the preliminary designs, you'll see how impressive this is. In addition, we've raised, I think totally right now, about $400,000. I just got a notification from a company that I won't mention until we get the check, but another $50,000 is coming in next week. Mandreach from Richmond's Home has given us significant money, and we're raising money, you know, a dollar at a time or $25 at a time nationally. What is, the only thing that's really been holding up our aggressive fundraising process is we don't have a site. And you can't sell, you can sell dreams, but you don't get any money for those dreams. But if you have a site and you know where that money is going, we'll be able to raise it. And I've been talking to Boeing Aircraft, they're very interested in helping. Lockheed Martin is interested in helping. So I'm not, you know, even during these times, I'm not concerned that we're not going to reach that goal. But we need your help, and your help could be the first step in making a nationally recognized monument that will bring people to Westminster. And we're just going to have to open some more Vietnamese and Asian restaurants. But that's okay. Good Americans, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If we could maybe move along, we'll just try and cover some information here about the site and design. So what you're seeing on the slide here is the original design. It was put forth back in 2010. This was done by sculpturist Ed White, Ed, yeah, Ed White. I always get, who was, who was an astronaut candidate? And the Smithsonian just did a big film on him. So the idea in this monument, do you see here, we'll just cover it really quickly, were all of those bronze tablets on that large wall, as Bill was getting to, were depicted to show the culture of the Lao Mung people, not just to be a strict memorial, but to explain what was going on, why, why the war happened, what happened to the Lao Mung people, and why they are here in the United States. Obviously, we, you can see the map on the ground for those of us who are geographically challenged. But it also is a great explanation, because, you know, we're getting, you know, those of us who are familiar with the conflict, we're getting older, and a lot of people don't realize whatever happened back there. So this was, this was the piece that was designed to go in the original site. Next slide, please. So this is the current design, which has grown a little bit in size because of the determination to show a little bit more about the culture and some more really intricate pieces about the Lao Mung people. One of the significant aspects of this, if you remember back on that last drawing, is that the plane was a little bit of a scale model. The proposal here is a full-size plane. I don't think we're going to be using the full-size flying plane, that's very heavy. But the idea is to have this as the attention-grabber in the site and be able to have this easily seen by passerby on 104th. The site was picked also because this location here at City Park, and we'll zoom this out in the next slide, has adequate parking, adequate use of nearby facilities, our recreation buildings, pretty much everything that was on the wish list when the committee approached us and said, hey, you know, we really have kind of a different idea for this design and where it should be. So as you can see, that, and that is relatively at scales. This is just south, if you happen to be a skater, rollerblader, or skateboarder, this is just to the south of our skateboard park. But we've asked them to, you know, work on a concept that would be complementary to the site, access the baseball field, the recreation center, but yet still leave us room in City Park too for our future recreation developments. Next slide, please. So this is, this is the site itself. On the left, you can kind of see it, aerial view of, from 104th, where it's located. Those are the Christopher Ball fields on to the left. On the right are the parking lots for the recreation center, with the skate park there in the back and the great lawn. So this front's on that frontage road. We've got all kinds of opportunity. We've already checked with engineering as to what we can do in that corner, should we wish to change out some of the things that are happening there. We have a small stormwater basin. But the site is perfect for visibility, go in both directions. It's up, and especially with the plane in the air. The map in the upper right shows you the Armed Forces Tribute Garden on the left. The smaller circle is where the original site was, and you can see just how close it was to 104th. And when we really thought about how their events typically work, especially the one we were able to witness at the airport about a year ago, there's a lot of people that show up. Now it's just locally. And they do cultural dance, and they play games, and, you know, it becomes a real, real event that just embodies the Lao Mung people. So we needed better, a better place. So the green site is, as you can see, seems to fulfill those needs in staff's opinion, and the committee has agreed with us as well. Let's see. Just make sure I've covered what I wanted to get to. I think that's it for now on the actual site. Again, Surface, I think it's six seventy-eight, Bill. They've been working very closely with us, and it would be the city's role to, again, assist in the site development and just make sure everything is done the way we want to have it done, the Westminster way. To that end, we just completed the Phase One Environmental Assessment application today on behalf of the committee. We took that on at a staff level. It wasn't too cumbersome, and we've got that submitted. So that's the first phase of being able to access that 250,000 from Perlmutter. And so we're ready to move on and see where we want to go.
If I could have the next slide, please. So the proposed agreement really starts with the verbal commitment that the National Lao Mung Memorial Foundation has made to raising all the funds necessary for the design, building, and the non-routine maintenance and repair, including but not limited to any damage from graffiti vandalism to any of the sculpture artwork or any of the memorial features. So any capital repairs would be covered by the foundation. Routine, day-to-day maintenance would be covered by the city. All funds for the construction must be secured by next December of 2024. And if the foundation is unable to secure the sufficient funds by then, you, the city, will have the option of terminating this agreement. City staff will serve as the project managers and work very closely with the foundation to hire the landscape architect and oversee the final design development, bidding, and then oversee the construction. It's very important so that we can make sure it fits in with the way that we build projects here in the city. The city will own and operate and provide all of the basic routine maintenance of the National Lao Mung Memorial. The foundation has agreed to establish an endowment with sufficient funds to cover these capital maintenance and replacement costs when and if they should occur. It's very straightforward. And if the council so directs, we can bring this informal, final form to you next, next week at your next council meeting. Any questions?
Does this agreement have a reverter clause? We cannot tell what happens in the future, but we've had numerous examples where really political winds change. And if that happened in our city, would this be given back to the people donating this memorial to the city?
That's a good question. I'll have to consult with C A O. on how that would be worded and.
And I don't, my understanding is we're not conveying land.
No.
So the city would retain ownership of the land on which this is located.
Yeah, but we're talking about the monument, which would be owned by the city in the case that some future council didn't like this. Could, would this be returned to the people who gave it to us?
Absolutely. Happy to look at that with Director Harare Mishler.
Thanks.
So I'm just curious, were other sites evaluated?
Yes. Many, many, many sites.
Starting in 2010.
Yes, we took quite a few field trips around the city, looking for that right spot.
We don't have enough fingers.
Lot of, lot of staff input, a lot of management, management office, C M O. input as well. And this one really was the one that truly did fit all of the bullets. I think we had about 12 things we were trying to accomplish. Obviously, you know, being able to see the monument or the memorial as for passerby and the attraction of it was one of the most significant things. So we even, we looked at some traffic counts in a couple of places. How many tra, we did this instance, we looked on 72nd, we looked on Sheridan. Again, we also tried to find places that would be able to hold a large event. Because the committee's looking to build a memorial, not to build all the infrastructure that's going to support it. So we were looking for existing electric, that existing parking, existing area where they can have their events. And the more bullet points we hit, the less and less and less we found on the sites.
I think another important aspect to this was finding a location that was worthy of a national memorial of this importance.
I know. That's why I'm kind of sad where it sits. To me, feels a little unceremonious, kind of.
It, to me, feels a little unceremonious, kind of sandwiched between two parking lots. And I know it's visible, but if there's a way to potentially create more of a, just a little more separation from the parking lot, it just doesn't feel like you're, you know, with the Veterans Memorial, you sort of have this approach and the separation from the parking where you kind of have more reverence versus this just seems like it's more sandwiched, again, between these parking lots, you don't have that transition. So that would be, that's my feel that makes me sad about this site. So if there's a way to, again, push it back. The other thing that I do worry about for the foundation is that this is very concrete-oriented right next to a skate park. And so while I'm looking at that their responsibility is maintaining non-routine maintenance and issues like that, I'd be concerned about, you know, are we going to be policing this from being, I mean, there's a skate park right there, which is, boy, did it look kind of fun, you know, and the way that it was designed, it's really cool-looking, but I just worry about just the, you know, sanctity of the space.
That is an excellent observation, to say that, and we'll definitely take it into account, both points. Luckily, we have some space there to work with. There's actually quite a lot of room to think about the transition from parking to the memorial itself. I think that's an excellent point.
The concept that was brought in there is relatively early in it because we've recently identified the site. So it's not heavily developed with a landscape or anything like that. And that is a tremendously good point about the skating and things like that. That is something that PRL staff has been looking for, is possible redesign of that or possible semi-relocation of the skate park in the long-term future. So maybe that factors into this as well. But yeah, that's a great point. We'll take a look at that.
First of all, thank you for bringing this to Westminster. I think this is, to me, this is a big honor. So I have known, growing up here myself, I've known many Laomong people that I've went to school with, as well as have welcomed me since I've been in the political realm from, you know, topspin things, very welcoming people, and I've enjoyed a lot of friendships in that community. So to be able to honor them, I think, is a great honor for the city. And I certainly would pass along my gratitude for what they did for the United States over the years and continue to do for this community. I would think, I like the point you bring up as far as policing it, but I would hope that the city would certainly be good partners in that as we take care of the monument for our armed services to make sure that we continue to honor our partners, because I think it would make sense. And obviously, I appreciate the fact that they're taking on the cost burden, but I can't imagine, you know, we have those services in the city anyway, so I would hope that we would do our fair share since they're going to bring that to our community. As far as the location, that's, I don't have that plan or I. But for me, that's a very accessible area. I'm over there all the time, so to be able to see that and drive by it and when people are at ballgames and stuff, I think that will give a lot of opportunities for that culture to be shared and people understand the history that you've shared here. And I think that's a good opportunity for the youth of our community to be able to understand some of that history. So I am very, very pleased with it. One question I do have is, what is your, and if I missed it, I apologize, but like, I appreciate being able to donate. I did that while I was sitting here, there's a QR code. But what does your funding gap look like right now?
Well, as I said earlier, I think we've raised close to $450,000. And I just got a commitment for $50,000 yesterday. I'm talking to, basically, as I said earlier, the problem has been we were selling the concept, now we're selling a piece of property, which was going to be really significant. Basically, we're looking to, we think it'll be between $2 and $2.5 million when we're finally done. And the, I think it's an achievable target. The, we're already starting to get individual donations, $200, $300 from the Mung community. And we planned another event in California this summer, and also we're going to fly the plane out to the Oshkosh Air Show, where we will put on a, we have a presentation we'll make in their auditorium to the Wisconsin people and the Mung community in Wisconsin. It's a, we'll do some air shows here as well, and I think that the spill of selling point is get some of you kids in the cockpit.
I appreciate those answers, and again, I'm excited about it, and I hope wherever we can participate in making sure this happens, that we do so as a city, because like I said, I know how big this community is and what a part of the city they are.
Well, thank you for the contribution. I appreciate it.
Absolutely glad to do it.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Thank you for bringing this to fruition. This is very exciting. And dovetailing off of Mayor Protam and Councilor Namela, one question I had is, I understand about our responsibility versus the organization's responsibility for care, but what happens if, I know it was stated that there would be funds and endowments set aside for capital improvements. What happens if there is an unforeseen cost that may not cover within the city, then step in and help with that cost?
Well, I'm not good at unforeseen, but I can say that the impact of this memorial nationally will, I think, make it very easy for us to deal with those potentially catastrophic problems. You know, we purchased the flying plane that still had its targeting equipment in the back, which weighed about 200 pounds, all old-fashioned computers for $115,000. Today, with the improvements that we put into that aircraft, it's worth over $350,000. So our investments are paying off. So it's not going to be hard to meet any kind of challenges. And we're appreciative of the commitment of the city to provide general maintenance and security for the park and the memorial concept. I think that what's important is that the general purpose is, number one, show the Asian community that we really care of their contributions to this country. Two, provide an opportunity to educate the American people, in particular, young people of the kinds of sacrifices that the Mung people has done and our soldiers who have given their lives to this country, many of which are my friends, and I know that John lost some of his friends in aircraft being shot down in front of him. So I think that this provides that kind of opportunity to elicit that kind of patriotism and show our support, but more importantly, educating our young people and other people about the sacrifices and the commitment to support the principles of democracy that we're hanging on to very carefully here.
Could we scroll back to what the proposed image will look like? Yeah, right here. So along with Councilor Namela, I can see the tiers being used as a playground for bikes and skateboards. So that was my first concern. I have a background in public art, specifically structural, and that was one of my points to where I looked right to. And also, the angle of the items on the two ends there, closest to the parking lot, that could also look like a skate park. So that was two concerns that I had immediately. And then just the fall hazard, since it's so straight, it's so plateaued at the top. What would that look like if someone was up top, let's say a toddler, someone that was playing around up there, and then that fall, would that be a liability for the city? I don't know. But just something to be cognizant of when we're looking at this for safety purposes. I would love, I would just love it, as far as the layout and the look, it's just those immediate flags came up.
Well, I think, from my perspective, I think a lot of those concerns will be incorporated into the final design, and I appreciate, this is a collaborative project. You guys have a stake in it, and we want to make sure that your concerns are addressed. There is probably architectural ways of providing a more safer presentation that will keep kids off that. I mean, you know, in Vietnam, we used glass bottles on our conces.
That would be a look.
I'll keep an eye out for that one. Yes, cows are absolutely great points, and this is, again, very early in our conceptual diagram.
Sure, I totally get that.
And, you know, this is going to go through PRL design staff and the consultant as well. And parks, we are very cognizant about skateboarding and safety and all the things that can potentially happen here. We've had discussions on, you know, just can you get on the plane? I mean, I'm surprised nobody asked that question, because, yeah, that's something we need to be concerned about as well. Can they scale that, what happens to it? So there are a tremendous amount of questions yet to be answered. But as Bill was saying, without, you know, a true site to be able to design for and be able to understand, because it's going to really address the site context, they want to have views of the mountains, everything's got to kind of work to be able to get that final design. And now with council's approval, if we can move forward with a site, then we can start bringing those plans to you and give you some updates, do whatever we want to. You can come to a design meeting if you want.
The point I want to make is that it will be an actual plane, and it will have, it will be, it'll have the hildry of the Laoshin Royal Airport on it. It'll be exact replica of what was, the type of plane that was flown during the war. And I neglected to mention that there are many veterans organizations that have donated to our cause, tens of thousands of dollars so far. And the agency that doesn't get recognized very often, that's the CIA, and I'm working with their organization, and they lost quite a few of their people over there. They can't tell you they did, but they did. And they have given us money and will play a role in helping design the legacy information on the wall, so.
Great.
And I think it'll be a great tribute to all those who participated and fought and died for democracy, the concept that we just want to make sure that we let our people know how important that is.
So glad to have the committee here. It's been a long haul. I've had some great opportunities to meet with some of the members. Sorry, John couldn't be here tonight, but I'm very excited that we're at this stage.
And to that point, I want to tell you how important John Haran has been to this project. He came up with the initial money to buy the airplane out of his own pocket, and he is that committed to this project. And as he told me yesterday, he's out of the country right now, but he said quite clearly, he says, you know, I haven't picked up a phone yet to raise money, because he wanted to have this phase of the operation done. And as you know, he was, he's a tremendous supporter of our armed forces and the 501(c)(3) that supports officers who have been killed in the line of duty. In fact, I don't know if you remember the Arvada shooting, that mortgage got paid for the widow. So that's the kind of guy he is, and that's the level of his commitment to this organization and this project. You can assure that we will approach it with a high degree of integrity and transparency in the process, so. But thank you for, thank this guy. He used to be on my speed dial until I lost him for a while. But thank you so much for your effort, and all of you. You make my heart warm, and I hope we can count on you vote.
I just wanted to thank you. I co-sign what everyone has said, I think those are all fabulous points, but just wanted to thank you for doing this. It's a heartwarming story that the Mung community has, and like every minority community, half the battle is just being seen, and this helps them feel seen. And I think that's the biggest value we can give here.
Yang Mi's relatives swam across the Saigon River, no, what, the Mekong River, to Thailand. And if you've ever seen pictures of it, it's not as big as Mississippi, but it's almost as wide. And during the rainy season, it's very precarious. And people had to fight, well, fight for their survival in this city and the county, country, and then fight their way out of the country and fight their way, and literally fight their way in terms of tenacity to get out of the Thailand camps to come to this country. And I'm really honored to call these Yang Chi and Yang Mi and his beautiful wife, my wife loves her cooking, for what they've done to this country and helping us, and it's time for us to pay them back. So thank you very much.
Then all of that being said, just make sure that the design is something that honors what you're trying to achieve. It's a national monument.
I just feel, you know, aside from me literally coming to your meeting, I'm controlling myself now.
Our goal is to fill up the Western Hotel.
There we go.
That's what we want to do. And we will have, we will plan national events for the Asian community. That includes Vietnamese and all over the country to come here and celebrate with us. We plan on getting, when we get national conventions here, this will be one of the sites they should come out to and visit. So we're committed. We know how to market. I mean, I've never lost an election with less than 66%.
Well, it's not about the marketing. It's about the design. John knows, as a designer myself, and so I just want to make sure it's.
But we're honored to have your participation. That's my point.
Well, you know, you had my heart back in 2010, so I know it will be beautiful. I can't thank you guys enough for hanging with it and being patient with us and as things have changed over time, but you're still here, the same goal, and I will, in a minute, you'll know before you leave here, if we have, I'm sort of guessing from what I've heard, we've got, going to have seven thumbs up to tell staff to move and we'll see you next week. And I just want to be sure you know, please be here next week because we are honoring Congressman Pearl Butter for all of his years of service.
Well, this is his, this is his baby.
So it would, in my head, I get goosebumps going, oh my gosh, this couldn't have melded better.
With bells on. And I guess my only comment is, my favorite quote is Margaret Mead who said, "It only takes a few committed people to change the world." Indeed, it's the only thing that can, and my mental name is tenacity, so. We'll stick around, thank you.
Okay, so, Council, we need direction if, where's your staff proposal that you're asking us to do?
All we're asking for is your approval to move forward on the timeline as proposed.
Thumbs up or down? You've got seven of us.
Yep, got seven. There we go. Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much.
See you next week.
Thank you.
Next.
Keep going. Okay, all right. So Mayor, Mayor Protam, councilors, so our next study session item regards the pavement quality index and our roadway improvement fee. We actually had this on the agenda several weeks ago. We just ran so late that we said, let's push this to the right. So we're back because we had some time, and so I'm going to turn this over to Brock Huffer. He is our interim Streets/Operations Division Manager in the Public Works and Utilities Department, and so he's going to kind of talk us through this project or this program, excuse me. All right, Brock.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protam, Council. As Mr. Freyte-
As Mr. Freitag said, my name's Brock Huffered. I'm the street interim, street operations manager. Tonight, Michael Parlow and I will be looking for direction to increase the roadway improvement fee. Next slide, please. So currently, the city has 1,136 miles of roadway. This slide shows the 2022 community survey. When you look at the most recent community survey, it shows that the maintenance of our city streets and sidewalks is very important. When you look at the ratio of improvement versus a level of satisfaction, it makes it the number one issue to concentrate on improving by this metric. Next slide. The pavement quality index, all the data collected is combined to create a numeric value, which is the PQI, which is the pavement quality index. This index differs from the other indexes because it incorporates smoothness or ride quality, thickness of pavement, the subgrade structure in addition to the surface distress. A pavement condition index, which is also referred as the PCI, that one only accounts for the surface distress. As you see, our PQI was decreasing from 2019 through 2022. We hope to see a quick uptick in 2022, but inflationary pressures reduce the amount of lane miles we could treat with allocated funds we've had. 2023, that's projected as a slight improvement based on 82 lane miles selected for treatment. Next slide. And this is an example of inflation costs that encountered in 2022. This is the price per ton of asphalt. So through the years from 17 through 21, it's kind of stayed steady, steady for the most part. And you'll see it goes down and up a little bit, but for the most part, it stays within $4 or $5 per ton. Well, in '22, it went up 17%. And this year, '22 to '23, we're seeing anywhere from 10 to 15% increase for asphalt price per ton. Next slide, please. At this time, Marco, Michael Parlow will take over with the presentation.
Thanks, Brock. Michael Parlow, policy and budget coordinator. Good evening, counsel. So this graphic here illustrates the combined impacts of those inflationary pressures that Brock just outlined, as well as the increased workload that's needed to maintain our roadways. And the roadway matrix software that Brock and his team utilize, it estimates what level of funding is needed to maintain the PQI each year. And here we have the projected operating budget as well as the 23 to 27 CIP budgets for street maintenance overlaid those needs. And as you see, 2023's needs is well-funded thanks to freed-up ARPA funds that counsel allocated to streets maintenance. And however, that one-time funding is now expected to be fully spent this year. And with unprecedented cost increases, a sizable potential funding gap you see develops in future years. Of course, the 2024 budget process can change these numbers and counsel can continue to prioritize street maintenance as it did in the previous budget process. But this is the projected budget as it stands. We do want to note that 2024's funding need is particularly high here. And that's because the system marked a few large roadway projects to be completed next year. But staff does have the flexibility to spend, to spread out projects in a little bit more smooth over the next four years. But however, regardless, it does show significant increase in need. That's an average of about 3.5 million a gap for each of the next four years. Next slide, please. So to show you the impact of underfunding street maintenance that it has on pavement quality, this graph has the projected average PQI if funding levels were to be kept at a similar amount as last year's funding, around 8 million or so. And just for reference, that bottom line there is how quickly pavement quality degrades with no maintenance. So you see after 10 years of funding at that 2022 level, the system projects the average road would have a PQI somewhere in the low 30s. Next slide, please. And to show you what that would look like, this is an example of a roadway with a PQI of about 37. Next slide. So in order to combat those inflationary impacts and to help at least partially close future funding gaps, staff recommends increasing the roadway improvement fee. Fees currently $6 a dwelling unit every month. And this base fee has not changed since its creation in 2014. However, counsel did expand that base fee to include multifamily dwellings in 2022, which increased the revenue from about 2.25 million in '21 to 3.65 million in 2022. So this and other investments councils made in the last year's budget process have made a big difference. But unfortunately, too many of those additional dollars have gone to just keep up with inflation. Staff recommends increasing the fee by a dollar per month per dwelling unit, which matches the percent increase of the price of asphalt, the increase in price of asphalt over the last year. This increase would generate an additional $620,000 per year, which roughly translates to treating five more lane miles of roadway each year. And lastly, while staff recommends this next step, there will be a need for future discussions to further close the funding gap through the budget process as well as potentially looking at the commercial contributions to the roadway improvement fee. Next slide. With that, I'll take any questions or feedback on our recommendations.
Thank you for the presentation. One of my recollections was when we were looking at how much of the ARPA dollars we wanted to move over to streets was how much you could actually accomplish because of material and labor availability. So with that being said, if we were to increase it past what recommendation is, can you, can you handle it load-wise and would we be able to get the materials to do it?
Yeah, this recommendation, we could definitely, it's well within our wheelhouse of what we can accomplish for sure.
One other question that I had in the past that I'll probably bring, go ahead.
Just to clarify, so the $620,000 is $1. Was your question if you authorized more than $1?
Yeah.
Could they handle, you know, two, for example?
Well, I, yeah, I appreciate the clarification because frankly, I'd like to know what you could handle. If we said money was no object, which I know isn't reality. But I mean, last year, we had a opportunity where we could have put more in it and we basically made a, what could you handle? And what we allocated, if I recollect, was what they could handle. So because part of my other, going past that initial question, that really is what I want to look at. Because I certainly would like to look at the commercial because I think they should, just like multifamily, the idea was pay your fair share. Commercial certainly brings people who are outside of the city, who are making wear and tear on our streets every single day. You know, and to be equitable to our residents, to me, that makes sense that we offload some of that. But you know, and a dollar per dwelling unit, I think that the residents want good streets. And so I think if you did $2 per dwelling unit, I don't think you're going to hear a ton of heartburn out of people. But the, you know, reality is how much would that change the impact? And more so, what would we actually be able to accomplish? Because even if you did something, you know, crazy with it, what could we actually accomplish? Because we need to balance that. One other thing, and I brought up before and I'll probably bring up as long as I'm here, is like how are we looking at new technology? Because, and I mean, I know not everything you see on the internet is true, but there is exciting ideas that you see such as recycled materials and stuff like that. I see especially people in Europe, they seem to like to do all sorts of crazy things. I don't know how it holds up, but you know, this technology is relatively old. And as we look at things like climate and stuff like that, I'm curious what the technology is. In addition to that, is there any federal funding with some of the things coming out of DC that we might be able to capitalize on?
So we do recycling right now. All of our asphalt that we put on the roadway has at least 25% of recycled asphalt material. Harlan, right around downtown from 88th and 92nd Avenue, that road has fiberglass strands within the asphalt. So we're definitely doing recycling throughout the city right now with our pavements.
Right. That's it for me, those are the things I wanted to hit on.
Kind of want to second some of that. The, just remind me, the six going to $7, is that per household per month?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm just curious, how much would a commercial fee add?
So currently, all commercial spaces pay the same $6 a month at a dwelling unit, does from a Walmart to Subway to any commercial property. It, it would depend on how we would look at it in terms of a use basis. You know, what kind of demand they're bringing to their parking lots and what kind of wear and tear that puts on the road. So there's, it's a, it's a wide range. And we would have to look at that to get a solid recommendation.
I'd prefer we hit up commercial over residence in terms of getting dollars. So yeah, that would be my preference.
Counselor, see mine?
Don't disagree.
Yeah, that Mayor Protem and Counselor Nermell are already hit on the key there too is that, you know, it's about capacity and I realize there was an issue with capacity for a while too, so that's my concern. And then I think, you know, when we go through the budget process this summer, you know, we can look at different funding sources from that as we did in the past too, so. But I think it would be nice to explore a different way to quantify commercial if possible. I mean, we have some users that are heavy, heavy vehicle users. And if that's possible from that standpoint, and if we could assess that or if it's even legal to do it, you know, by gross vehicle weight of owned vehicles. I mean, that's what's putting the, putting the wear and tear on the roads. So that's, I know that's a long-term discussion, but I think that really brings in, you know, how do we equitably fix what's being damaged by who's damaging it, you know, that part of it too? So I think we can do a both kind of scenario and layer that.
Yes, I think what Mayor Protem was talking to is last year, when you weren't here, city manager, we actually increased by how much, $1.5 million? How much did we increase the road budget by?
I don't remember, but I think it was more than that though.
$3 million?
1.2 out of the ARPA dollars, 1.2, 1.4.
We increased $3 million with the ARPA funding.
And we explored increasing more, but you said the asphalt wasn't available, nor were the contractors, right?
I was not in that position last year, so I could, I did not speak of that, no.
Does anyone remember?
Yep, it was.
Yeah, that's why we didn't raise it anymore.
Right, because otherwise we would have spent more, okay? Well, we still have some ARPA dollars left over, don't we?
So originally, I think when we allocated the freed-up ARPA dollars, there was that limitation and we were trying to space it out a bit more. However, since you came on board, Brock, I know that we now are looking to spend all $3 million of that this year.
So the $3 million ARPA funding originally from my manager at the time, we were told to spend $1 million over three years. Well, as the sun core started running again, we started where we didn't have the shortages of asphalt or contractor could do the work. So therefore, I put all $3 million into 2023. We're not spending the $3 million over three years. We're doing it all in 2023.
Do we still have ARPA dollars?
Let me speak up to that if I could. The discussion of the council was then to use the balance of the ARPA funds to go into the water utility to minimize and mitigate the impacts of any increase in costs of water rates and so forth. So all of the remaining ARPA funds have been put into that place. If you recall the discussion, it was sort of a, how much can be accomplished in road improvements? Our staff team provided what number they could kind of have in capacity. And then the rest of the funds were placed into the utility along with some very specific funds for a couple of other projects, which are pretty well either underway or very mature at this point.
Okay, then, well then let's go on to the next step. In the past, we funded street maintenance through the Highway Users Fund, right? And do we get like $8 million from that a year or how much do we get? I forgot.
It's the Highway User Tax Fund. And last I looked, a portion of that goes towards street maintenance. And I believe it's $3.5 million?
That's really the foundation of the bottom bar that you saw there already. That's essentially, we're spending all of those highway user tax funds on street maintenance and concrete repair and construction, so.
How much was that?
I think we're spending onwards of $8 or $9 million and our Highway Trust Fund is three to four, somewhere in there.
So where are we getting the difference?
Other operating income of the city, sales tax, general fund, mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
I don't, I think putting a fee on really commercial would be way too difficult. Putting a fee on a residential place is a pretty straightforward thing. There are two cars there, they don't weigh that much. It's pretty straightforward. But when you go to commercial, I think the range is going to be mind-boggling. Absolutely mind-boggling and different from like a King Supers to a mom and pop. Go ahead, jump in.
Well, I mean, I think it is difficult to figure out what the right way to make it equitable. But I think that in my mind, we also need to look at it though. Because I mean, if you think about, and I think the difficult thing is trying to say, well, I think right now, why I think it's inequitable is to say $6 for a Walmart versus $6 for my household. When Walmart has hundreds of people coming and going every day, they have big trucks who deliver every day. The amount of wear and tear that their operations is doing on our infrastructure versus the three cars that come and go from my house is substantially different. So I don't disagree that it's difficult and I would want it to be, you know, somehow equitable to the businesses. Because Walmart is also going to be different than say, G's Taco Shop. That's very much different as far as they, as what kind of traffic they're doing. And you know, well, and I don't know if like it would be looked at as a, you know, a shopping development. I don't know exactly how it gets built because I imagine it's per tap. Or rate payer, because right, it goes on their water bill. So that's going to be complex too as far as how that hits businesses. But, but it's not, I mean, and the last point I would make is the reason that we did what we did with the multifamily was they weren't paying in. And that's the challenge with that too, is a multifamily unit, if they're paying, you have 30 units, say for easy math, and they're paying the same thing as your one house, that's not equitable. And so that was some of the work we did on this last time. And I just think that we have to figure out some way to look at commercials so that they're paying more into the system.
And you want to jump in, Nermell?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you could tie it to parking spaces, you could tie it to drive-through facilities. You know, you could look at a lot of different.
There he looks like he might have some ideas.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We're not prepared tonight to discuss, you know, a commercial fee, but we can go and do that work and provide some options to the city council in your suburb budget activities. One of the difficulties is one day the Walmart is open, the next year it closes for business permanently and there's no roadway impact, so administering these are difficult. So I think what we would be well-served to do, Mr. Freitag, is to discuss with our traffic engineers, look at best practices across the country and avail ourselves to some options that the council could consider for commercial. And we will come back, I think perhaps in the context of the budget planning. But for tonight, and we can do that if it's, if it's the direction of the council, we'll prepare that. And for tonight, just to uptake what you might think about for an increase in our flat fee. And by the way, we could implement that if council wishes overnight and then a seconding. And by the way, we could implement that if, as council wishes overnight and then a second increase in January first or some mix of different things to address the capacity issues and have the greatest impact possible. So, um, so maybe we'll get direction on two things, Mayor, which is first, we will work on and prepare commercial and then second, the will of council on, uh, the, the per-dollar increase, okay?
I just wanted to share with the council, um, in my former community, we explored roads and how you pay for roads was, you know, a major issue. And, uh, we explored a transportation utility and there are states and communities across the nation that are establishing transportation utilities, specifically, you know, fees generated to, uh, you know, residential properties and commercial properties for, um, roadway improvements. And, um, A model, and there are several different models out there and we can take a look at those different models. But the one that we found favor with, um, in exploring was, uh, based upon trip generations. And so nationally, a residential property, two cars, you know, um, average number of people, I don't remember what it was, generates nine trips to and from their house each and every day. A grocery store generates several hundred, a fast food restaurant generates many more hundreds and so on and so on. And there are databases out there that manage what chip, trip generation is, for example, as a way to do that. I will tell you that when we rolled this out to the community, it was extremely confusing for people to understand. You know, my, my residence doesn't generate nine, you know, I only go to the store, you know, uh, once a day and so that's only two. So, I should only have to pay two. And then someone else, well, they have four cars at their residence, so they're really generating, you know, thirty-six plus. And, and so it became this, you know, equity issue as opposed to type of residence equals numbers of trips generated, which equals, you know, the fee that you end up contributing towards that transportation utility. It was very, very confusing and so, um, we tabled it and sat on it until we could, you know, build some community support. But I just wanted to share with you that there are multiple different models out there about how to distribute road, uh, improvement costs across a community that integrate residential fees and commercial fees where, you know, resi- and a commercial fee are looking at the type of property and how many trips that might generate, for example. So, just wanted to throw that out at you, that's something we can certainly, um, take a look at. But, uh, you know, it, everyone then looks at it through their, their personal lens as opposed to, you know, an average of what a residence has versus what a commercial property and then the full gamut of the mom and pop shop versus the fast food drive-in versus the grocery store or the, you know, the mega shopping center, et cetera, et cetera. So, just FYI, I wanted to share that.
Can I just say, um, I realize in fact, we should be basing this in fact versus getting into, you know, because yeah, even if it's parking spaces and everyone's like this business, that business, that person, really isn't like, there's a number that I learned while working over at Denver, it's like, um, a big forty-foot truck is worth a thousand cars on the road. And so, we have a lot of heavy truck users, we have multiple trash companies, we have a lot of, you know, we have the Amazons, we have all of these kind of delivery services, et cetera. We have a lot of trucks and they are making the most impact on our roads. So, as we think about our approach to actually base this in fact and therefore tackle the, the actual impactors to the community.
Okay, so, let me continue. So, I think really commercial is very difficult. I certainly don't mind looking at it. I can certainly look at it and tell us what it is. But I think just this really discussion right now brought out all of the pitfalls with fees. Is how does one do an equitable fee? And that's why we use taxes. And I'd rather fund our roads with taxes. Just like we get three and a half million from the Highway Trust Users Fund and we, and until twenty-fourteen, we finish the rest with taxes. That's what I'd like to do. I don't want to raise people's water bills a buck a month, not at all. I think we should pay for roads with taxes.
When you say that, do you mean existing taxes or?
Yes, I mean with existing taxes.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand what you're suggesting.
I just want to, uh, so when you bring it back for the commercial, um, and the other types of ideas, if, if we could benchmark as well, I'm curious what other communities do in Colorado. Do they use P Q I or are they still on PCI or like, are we all on the same measurement system? And then what are they measuring at and where are they?
Are you done, Counselor?
Yes.
Um, I just would like to look at this, um, it's kind of similar to Counselor Baker's. Um, we made this as a strategic priority, um, is to make sure that we're fully funding our strategic plan. And I'd like to understand, um, as we go through the budget process, what we can, and if it's on the purview of council, which it is, um, what we need to do to fund and what we might need to do to cut. Um, because I'd like to fully understand how we can fill in that gap with what we have. I understand with inflation, um, there's some kind of cost that would need to be increased. Um, I'm not totally against, um, increasing on a fee, but I'd like to understand how we can best do it in the resources that we currently have. Um, since that was a priority for us that was set at least last year in our strategic plan, so.
I agree, I'm, I'm on board with the dollar increase, but I also would like to look at that when we go into our budget. Um, I think that that's a very valid point. And so, um, if we're gonna ask for an additional dollar a month fee, I want to make sure that we're properly balancing budget dollars to go towards what we did say was a priority. And the majority of, of council agreed that this was something that's a core service that we wanted to go after. So, I, I would like to see how we feel that we've, um, increased that coming from the sales tax dollars, both last year, knowing that we took a lot of that from ARPA, but what are we doing to make sure that's a priority over things that aren't core services going into the next budget year? I think that that makes, uh, sense and is consistent with what the strategic plan said.
That's one reason why I had asked for, from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-one, how much did we spend? Because alls we see is twenty-twenty-two on and I have no idea if we're spending less, more, same. I have no idea because I wasn't here.
Yeah, especially with, you know, and then you mix in the, the ARPA dollars, you know, that, uh, COVID had so many good, positive, bad, strange effects that we're still trying to, I think, you know, get, get normal bearings again. The only other thing I would say is that we do come back and, uh, you know, when you bring back options as you go review, obviously, you're not gonna come back with everything. I mean, I would like to see things that commercially, if we're gonna look at that, makes sense for us as a city that are consistent with some manner with the other things that we do. You know, doing something completely different for, from what we're used to versus the residential might be. I think that does make sense for us in my mind, so hopefully you pick the three that you think make the most sense for the city of Westminster.
Mayor, I can share this with the council via email, but to answer your question, you had asked, you know, what was our total expenditures on, uh, road improvement, road reconstruction, construction, et cetera? But in two thousand sixteen, the city was at five and a half million, two thousand seventeen at five point six million, two thousand eighteen at five point eight million, two thousand nineteen, six point nine million, two thousand twenty, I'm sure associated with COVID to a degree, five point one million. Um, but then in twenty-twenty-one, jumped to seven point nine million, twenty-twenty-two, um, nine million and projected here for twenty-twenty-three, eleven point eight million. So, steadily increasing and frankly, between two thousand sixteen and twenty-twenty-three, you're double what you were, uh, paying in two thousand eighteen.
Two point two of that million of that, no?
No.
It was from savings of the one point nine million that went into staffing that Jody helped us cut.
Okay, so, anyway, I'll send that on to the council just for your information, okay, thanks.
Any other comments? I don't know that we have consensus, um, any, do we have consensus for adding the one dollar for the home to the water bill?
I'm not ready.
And probably best for the commercial is, do you want them to look better into the commercial?
Yes.
I get the commercial, I didn't hear the, I didn't see the, the numbers. Not enough? Okay, got it.
Well, we're, because we're discussing the water bill, um, it's got so much stuff on it now, what's going where. I, I, we need a better explanation somewhere that people, because our, what used to say water tap fee or water meter fee or whatever, went from thirteen dollars and five cents to thirteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. At least for my last water bill, it went up, um, no explanation. And, um, people, people hate fees because they don't get explanations of why things are raising or not raising. And so, they look at their total water bill with a lot of things that are on there that aren't water. So, I'm getting pretty sensitive from people. We have to do a better job explaining what's on there, why it's on there and what it goes for and be able to prove it. And, um, when these things just pop up from one month to one month, um, I mean, when I was running in two thousand and one, January had a fee of ten dollars and something, February went to a different fee for that meter and then by March it went to thirteen oh five. No explanation, it just kept going up, so.
Um, I think that's a very valid point. So, one of the things that I would be in favor of is something on our bill and is well on our portal. We have all those FAQs now, um, with the new portal, to be able to explain what you're using those fees for. In my time on council, there was a lot of discussion around what we allowably could use the fees for, which I don't have a problem with the discussion, where my rub has always been, is to then, um, educate the public to say this is what we are using it for and I think that that's fair, that they understand exactly what the fees are going to. And if we change it, that we, you know, update the residents that, hey, because there are ones that we could use for different things and that's been a discussion over time. The other thing, and since we're on, on the thing, I know I sent in before that I had a resident who asked about, um, what are grace period and the due dates and stuff and I, and I know that, uh, there was a note back that maybe our neighbors don't necessarily publicize that. But I think that that's something that I would be in favor of publicizing. I think that it was, it's fair and transparent, um, business for residents to understand exactly when they're actually gonna get hit with a fee versus when their due date is. And then there's no, uh, questions when they call into staff, whether we have new staff or anything else, that, that's what, how we do business. Um, because I've got, over the years, I have got complaints about that at various times in my, my tenure.
I agree.
I have a really stupid question, since I don't pay any of the household bills. I've got enough of them at the business, so. Does our water bill, and I know, we don't get paper either, so, does our water bill say water bill or does it say utility? Because I think too, it, it has other things on it that it's a misnomer, that it's your water bill. Or is that just people in the back of their mind? Is it our utility and service fee bill? I mean.
I want to say those, both those words are on it, I don't know what.
I mean, I'm with you because I don't get the bill either. I live in a multifamily housing in my town hall and HOA pays it.
Yeah.
Um, and so, I, I'm with you, I don't, we don't have an account, so.
Get my sign on. Tell Shelley to give you the keys.
Maybe we could bring a copy of the bill, but I'm quite sure it's presented as your utility bill that includes your monthly stormwater fee. It includes your water bill, uh, service and, uh, here we go.
Oh, utility bill.
And includes your sewer, sewer management, uh, bill as well, all in one spot. And the roadway improvement fee is presented on there as well.
Yeah, so it is a utility bill, so, okay.
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you. I learned something new today.
Mayor, I think I got what I think we have what we need, you know, we'll come back, we'll take a look at the commercial piece um, and see whether there's, uh, you know, a better way to skin that cat. We'll certainly take a look at what we can do, you know, physically, um, with the resources that we have um, as far as roads, um, per, um, uh, per year. I picked up on the PCI versus P Q I and what do our, you know, peer communities do and how do they measure? That's certainly something we can do. I wrote down the water bill versus the municipal utility bill, so I think we've answered that. And, uh, um, you know, what specifically are those fees allowed for and when they change? There should be some kind of explanation as to why they're changing. So, that's certainly reasonable. Mayor Protem, to, uh, to your comment, and I think we sent this back, but, um, in the world of, of billing, you set a due date and, you know, you tell people that's your due date and that's when you want them to pay it by. The fact that the city waits four days before they charge a late fee, you know, is a nice thing. I'm not so sure you want to advertise you got four days of grace before you get charged the late fee, you know?
I, and, and I saw that, I guess I just disagree because like, say for example, my, my, uh, home mortgage. I know that if I pay it by the sixteenth, I don't have a fee. I'm not gonna go to the credit bureau over it. And I, I don't, I think credit cards and stuff and actually, uh, as much as I don't agree with very much with this administration, that is something they actually in DC are talking about, uh, as far as like transparent fees and things of that nature because it's just a, a, a good transparency for the consumer in my mind. So, I, I appreciate what you're saying and I'm not saying it's wrong, I guess I just disagree and I, I think that the city of Westminster can do better. And I don't think that it would hurt us any to, to say we're not gonna charge a late fee until this day. And, and I guess the bigger rub is this particular resident who is, is, I can tell you that this resident is, is somebody who calls on, not a constant basis, but when they have something, they call and they're educated with what they call with. And they were frustrated because they had called the city four times and got different answers. And, and so, um, uh, you know, I, I guess that it is, to me, it just makes sense and it would, it would alleviate that becoming a problem for us. So, you know, unless it really is gonna cause us a business problem, that would be my preference, but obviously, I'm just one voice, so.
I, I would second that because, I mean, ever, I mean, we all know by the sixteenth, if you don't pay your mortgage, that's a big fee. But I don't mind not putting it on a bill, saying you have a grace period of this just so that we're consistent internally, saying we're, you have ten days and that's it. Or you have fifteen days or sixteen, whatever it is that we set. Um, because some people space their billing and their payments accordingly, um, whether it's the first or whether it's the fifteenth or, um, I mean, I can talk from firsthand experience on spacing out billing. So, as long as we have an internal consistent message, I'm fine with not putting it on and advertising you have a grace period of this. Most people are gonna pay it by the due date anyway, um, but as long as we're consistent on that, so.
Okay, back to a request from Counselor Baker. I know we don't have any of our lobbyists here.
We do not.
But, um, he had a question about a bill.
You had raised this with me, knowing that it's something that I care about. I had actually reached out to a lobbyist and asked because my understanding was dead. My understanding back from the lobbyist was that they anticipate that it dies in committee, but that it has a constitutional requirement for it to still go to committee. I don't know enough about how we do state law to know whether or not that's a hundred percent accurate, but my understanding was, um, from her research, they still feel that it's a, a dead thing. I have seen plenty of emails and stuff on, uh, Second Amendment advocates saying, you know, that, that, that that's coming up. So, I don't, I don't know, um, where it actually lies without knowing, but that's what the lobbyist had told me because I, one, you've raised it to me and I, that's what I did with it and I, I should've brought that up when we had coffee the other morning, but wasn't the topic of our discussion, so. I, I certainly am against the bill, whether or not everybody wants to take a position on that, but that's my understanding where, where it was gonna go.
I think part of that process is that once, once it's assigned, it has to go to the committee and then.
I think it was assigned. I think it was assigned.
Yeah, and unless it's May eighth, where everything dies, then it, it has to be at that point, either withdrawn by the sponsor, or they have to take action on it, so.
Hi.
Ted, and it has a hearing on really Wednesday morning at nine thirty.
That's, that is what I've seen.
Real quick, we've got somebody who might be able to speak to this.
I'm Praiser Policy and Budget Manager. Just to clarify, are we talking about the assault weapons bill, or the new bill that was introduced on the unserialized weapons?
The assault weapon one.
So, that, that bill, I believe, has been assigned, but has not been calendered. So, it's still assigned to a committee, but.
It's assigned to Wednesday. If it's twelve thirty, it's twelve.
We just did this like the last couple of days.
Yeah, just got scheduled.
Which bill number is it?
Twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty.
It's Wednesday morning at nine thirty.
Now, we don't have any, you know, staff here that can speak to this, no lobbyists, so.
What was the second one you talked about?
It's a, it's a whole different problem. It's the, to, to basically make it against the law to have the unserialized or ghost guns, which is their scary name, which is the ones people make at home. And the bill has an out, so that, this is my big, well, I wouldn't advocate for the bill in the first place, but my biggest problem with it, and I did bring this up to the lobbyist, too, was that they are, if it passes as is, it would only give residents till the end of the year. So, they'd have to go to a gun shop, and that, can you imagine all the, being, everybody who actually follows the rule and actually goes forward and says, Kay, I'm going to comply with your new law. They're, in their, the way it was written, unless it's changed the date, and then it gives them till the end of twenty-three in order to violate this new law. But that, that's what that one is. And so, it's basically forcing you to serialize. I think there's some other components, but that's the part that I was like, that's crazy, because that's going to cause a, I mean, that would cause a backlog, I'm sure, on places that are actually capable of serializing a firearm.
That one is scheduled for committee Thursday afternoon.
Well, I'd like us to really direct our, really lobbyists to lobby against the assault, assault weapons one. Would it cost the city anything to take a stand against it? Does anyone think there would be really, I mean, the political repercussions, or anything else like that?
Well, my understanding, I saw it in here again, it was on the internet, that it, that would have an effect on sixty percent of the semi-automatic weapons in circulation.
The, it's, what they are deeming an assault weapon in that bill is, is wide-ranging. For anybody who is actually a firearm person, I hate the term assault rifle, because that's not what AR stands for, stands for Armored Light. But they, it, it, it is far-reaching over the AR-15s, which is really the one that a lot of people think of as, as an assault weapon. To me, an assault weapon is anything that somebody uses to assault somebody with this. Assault weapon, but that, that is one of the concerns about it. But my understanding it was going to die, supposedly it still is. If it, if it came up, I, I am, I'm opposed to it. I, it, it is very overreaching legislation that, in my mind, just makes criminals a law-abiding president.
Right, and it hurts, well, if it's sixty percent, probably more than ten thousand people in our city. So, I think we should take a stand here instead.
I see people thinking.
I would be willing to vote as an oppose, based on the fact that we had this discussion on something earlier, that being unconstitutional and upholding our oath. So, I would do it based on that grounds, specifically, that may fit better into our lobbying profile. Protocol, I'm reaching here, but that's my stance.
I still haven't read it, so I would not have clue what I'm voting on, so.
From what I know and what we pulled on a couple weeks ago, I'm still opposed.
I would be opposed. I mean, I thought that one was, was dead, but I have read it, and it is, it is unconstitutional in my mind. I feel like if it passed, it'll actually get shot down in court, but I would oppose it.
Oppose, and oppose, and oppose, and oppose. Okay, so can you communicate that?
Yes.
Amy?
Thanks.
You willing to talk about decisions that are made here? Especially about water? With four votes or more than, give direction, or you want to wait?
So, on Monday, on Monday's agenda, I understand there will be contracts proposed for city council's consideration to move toward the next phase of design for the water treatment plant on Westminster Boulevard. To the extent that city council had on its January twenty-third agenda, first reading of a supplemental appropriation to fund the acquisition of the Westminster Boulevard property and perfect the city's right to appeal the valuation verdict. The January twenty-third council agenda also included a presentation from staff that went through the four options as far as the water treatment plant location and design. Following the presentation, city council approved on Saturday, February sixth, supplemental appropriation to go ahead and pay the courts to buy the property and file the notice of appeal on the valuation verdict. The staff direction that came from that led to staff cutting a check for under twenty million dollars the next day and depositing it with the court. That was February seventh, and I believe February twenty-eighth, the notice of appeal was filed by our outside counsel contesting the valuation verdict on the acquisition. So, to the extent that council has questions as far as the procedural history, that's what I would offer, that there are republic meetings, both January twenty-third and February sixth, at which time city council direction was provided to staff to move forward on acquisition and appeal of the valuation verdict for Westminster Boulevard. So, I don't know what other questions council might have.
I just know, Councilor Baker, you've been calling people to call us. And you've gone to newspapers, if they will listen to you, and just trying to figure out, we've had direction that we have given staff, what are you trying to undo?
I see it differently, mayor. I see our actions on the twenty-third and the sixth of February preserved option four. If we had not filed the appeal, we would not have option four. We, as a council, never made a choice between one, two, three, and four. I mean, when did we talk about the merits of the different plans?
Councilor Baker, it's taking everything that I have to show restraint this evening.
I know.
Because you have embarked on a plan to, in some cases, what I, I feel is abuse some of our senior population and scare them. Gotten hysterical phone calls from people yelling at me about weight, raising their water rates. I take great pride in accepting those phone calls and talking to our residents. But you are lying to them. I'll use your words, because I'm going to be very direct with you. You are costing me business time and business hours, so that I can chat with these people. So, it's, it's a great benefit from that standpoint, to chat with some residents I haven't before. But when you set members of our community that may not fully understand, and many of them are on fixed incomes, set them into a tailspin that forces them to make a phone call that they normally would not do, I find that disingenuous. We have spent hundreds of hours. And, and I, I think we've already gone over this hundreds of times. But by us purchasing that land, and this is exactly what we have said before, and I have not, I have not said anything else at the dais at it, because quite frankly, I no longer wish to waste my breath. And nor will I anymore in public. Because you always wish to have a debate about things, but that debate doesn't settle anything. It's not, this is not moot court. This is, we make decisions here. It's not a never-ending argument, and we have made a decision as a group. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, because I didn't think I could have that restraint.
Well, thanks for having the restraint.
Thank you.
I've made, I've said to Councilor, Councilor Friday, City Manager Friday, I won't go into discussion of protocols next year unless we have repercussions for not following them. Because I'm tired of, I could name so many things that we have, and we spent time on, that was just a waste of breath. So, when this all started coming up last week into this week, and I know you're trying to stack the deck next week for our city council meeting, terrific, but I, I don't get it. A decision has, four people at least have said, we're moving, and you keep trying to take us back. So, it's frustrating, but we have no repercussions, yes?
Councilor Baker and I had a, a sit-down and had a conversation about, about this topic. I think there are a couple of things that I would like clarified, and I don't have them in front of me that I was going to ask City Manager Friday about, that I feel like potentially are just somebody calling something blue, and it really being red from their perspective. And I don't, I don't see them necessarily as disingenuous. What, what I will say, and I shared with you Friday, was it Friday? It was Friday we sat down. This week is, is quick, that was a long morning for me. I sat down with a resident who was concerned about the same topic. But I, I don't have the same thing, and I don't, you know, I don't know, talking to residents, the misperception about, you know, where we're at with it, the misperception that they, some, some of them don't feel that we're properly educated on the topic, I do find insulting. And I think I, I let you know that in some terms on, on Friday, because I've, I have put five years into this conversation. I know, and I'm not trying to belittle what my colleagues have done, but I have made this, everything I, I breathed for five years. And so, we have done substantial amount of work that has benefited the residents in the rates. There, and you even said this on Friday, there are some things, such as the four percent, whether it's exactly four percent, we all agree that the four, four and a half percent was a ceiling of, we don't want to go above this. I don't think that that was like a hard, we're locked into that. It's, there's reasonable costs from year to year that are going to go up, that are outside of our control. And you agreed that that is fact when we met on Friday. Some, some people in this conversation seem to think that that's not reality, but it's an unfortunate reality we have to deal with, things are going to cost more from year to year. Nothing we can do about it, just like I can't do anything about it when I get my Excel bill, which we've heard multiple times in, in this conversation. We have done good work for the residents. Work's not over. I hope that once we, you know, get down the road, we go back and look at things like the tier. We had talked about the Thornton model in the past, but we didn't have time to look at that fully last year. But I think we made a commitment to the residents that we were going to come back to that. But we have to get some of this other stuff off our plates and off the staff's plates in order for us to move forward. I do think we have a working solution. I think that, and I mentioned this to you on Friday, you have valuable insight in the way you look at the stuff that is different than the way I look at it, that's different than the way that Councilor Emmons or anybody else looks at it. And I hope that you continue to be a part of the conversation. But at some point, like I said on, on Friday, we do have to move forward. And to me, this is a workable solution. There are components, and I've shared this with staff, that for me to continue on, I need to see the, the finances. And I think those things are all forthcoming, and we'll continue to make decisions and work with staff to make sure that they're the most economical possible for the residents who live in Westminster. So, you know, I, I feel the frustration in, in a different level, but I think I was forward with you about that, but I think it's fair for our colleagues to get a taste of the conversation that we had.
Well, the Mayor Protem and I thought it would be valuable if we could find out the hard reason that you replied to council, that really Semper could not last more than ten to twenty years. The hard reason. And you sent in one of the emails. And I saw that as taking option one off the table.
And, I want to make sure that everybody understands my, because we don't always, aren't a hundred percent maybe in what, what we said with that. I said it's worth asking the question from my perspective, and again, this is where I think there's some things that are, perception of what was told to us, the way maybe one council will do, or another one. When I hear things you had brought up, and you've brought up multiple times, when we were told fifty years mechanically for Semper, I hear mechanically, I think of the actual mechanics you put in. There are other parts of Semper that I, I look at, that we were educated about, that we know won't last that long, or were concerned that they won't. So, that's why I, I didn't have the same discrepancy. What I agreed makes sense is, can we validate that, you know, my understanding of it versus his understanding of it, is the reality of what we were told. I don't have any problem having things clarified that we were told. I think that that's fair to any member on this body. But at some point, there has to be a line, if you, you may not accept what the explanation is. And I guess trying to, what I've been trying to do is gauge what's fair to you to get your question answered. But then, if that's not acceptable, we move forward. So, if it's something that's been asked before, and there's still a misperception, at some point, we have to not keep spending staff time on it, in my mind, and council time on it. But that was one that I think, there was that, and there was a couple other things.
Circles, the circles, the two circles.
On, on the map, that I could pull up. If you look at the, the map when, and I was going to do this offline, but since it's brought up, I'll pull up the map. So, on this particular map that was given to us, that has the West Cliff versus the Trenwood, my understanding, I'm going to walk this over just so that you can see, because this was what we talked about on Friday. I'm looking at that as West Cliff, and that as Trenwood. And Councilor Baker thinks, in his recollection, because of where West Cliff Parkway is, that that is West Cliff, and that this is Big Dry Creek Park. But you have the circle around it, and the explanations you were giving when we talked about West Cliff, I applied those to that circle. And so, what, you know, is, just, I'm being looked at as dishonest, I think it's a misperception of what we're calling those two circles. And you may not be able to answer that now, but that was something I was going to bring to you.
Sure.
Then there was the thing about that, I mean, the Director of OK Utilities gave a press conference in which he stated the forty percent.
That, I'm not willing to go back. One of the lines I did tell, tell you, and I will reiterate, I am not willing to go look at things that, for, that are in the past, for people who no longer work here. We have to, and I think I shared this, when we got new city management, there are things that happened in the past, and we as an organization need to move forward. And as long as everybody in this organization is on board with what the city manager we hired is doing, then, you know, we need to move forward. So, I, I don't personally want to spend any time on things of the past with, with that. I, I don't have any appetite for it.
Even though it was said in the email?
It, it was done by people in the past, I'm, I'm not.
My concern is that other utilities in the front range provide water at four dollars, four dollars and somewhat cents a thousand to water your lawn, up to twenty thousand gallons. Leblot's three sixteen, Fort Collins is less than four, Loveland's Foco, less than that. Denver itself, if you live in Denver, is four dollars and forty-seven cents a thousand to water a twenty thousand a month usage. I don't know why we can't. We have to buy the same pipes, we have to buy the same. We have to buy the same pipes, we have to buy the same valves, we have to pay the same labor costs, we have to buy the same chemicals. And we've all, well, I don't know if you've all acknowledged, but I've acknowledged that when we set the water rates, when we lowered them, we just pulled those numbers out of the sky because we didn't have any factual basis to base the numbers on. So to me, the 678 we're going to charge this summer is a completely arbitrary number. And when I see us borrowing hundreds of millions of dollars, well, in the example I used, if we borrow $192 million or $196 million at 3% interest, which would be a good, fair, really municipal interest rate, because it's double tax exempt. If you look at the websites, that's in the range they're going for, maybe on the better end of the range. Pay the principal on interest on that for 20 years would be annual payments of like 12,913, 12 million, 900,000, 13 million dollars a year. If we sell 6 million kilogallons of water, that's $2, $2.10 per kilogallon. That has a profound impact on the water rates. I don't think that we've truly, from my point of view, that we've truly explored these. And that's what I've told the people I'm calling.
Have you met, gone and talked with Mark at all, sat down with him, so he knows your concerns?
I have indeed. I have indeed.
We've had a phone call about some of these items, yes.
So that's why I'm doing what I'm doing.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up. It's against protocols, but let's.
How is it against protocol, Mayor?
Because we've made some decisions. We, we're moving on.
When did we formally choose among the four options? I don't call us keeping option four in the mix a viable option. Because if we hadn't appealed that, our choices were to walk away. Our choices that on the twenty-third, twenty, twenty-third and the sixth were to walk away or to pay the millions. And we paid the millions and kept option four a viable option. That's the way I view that.
And for me, looking at those other options, that is the only option that makes sense, that we could do what we need to do for the, for the future of Westminster. So that's how I look at it. Okay, we're done.